Good morning, and welcome to the Calaveras County Board of Supervisors meeting for Tuesday, August 27, 2024. Calling this meeting to order, we will begin the closed session and report out.
Report out from August 13, 2024. Item one, pursuant to government code 54956.9D1, conference with legal counsel, re-existing litigation, Green versus County Workers' Compensation Appeals Board Case Number ADJ13541418. Board action, no reportable action. Item two, pursuant to government code 54956.9D2, conference with legal counsel, re-existing litigation, one case, significant exposure to litigation, board action, no reportable action taken. Item three, pursuant to government code 54956.8, conference of real property negotiator Marcos Munoz, re-potential purchase price and terms of payment for APN 010010ROW. Negotiating party, California Department of Transportation, Charles T. McKinney. Board action, no reportable action taken. Item four, pursuant to government code 54957.6, conference with county-designated labor negotiators Teresa Hitchcock, Marcos Munoz, and Judy Hockins. Regarding the following employee organization, Service Employees International Union Local 1021. Board action, no reportable action taken. Closed session for today, August 27. Item one, pursuant to government code 549569D1, conference with legal counsel, re-existing litigation, Calaveras Planning Coalition versus Calaveras County Board of Supervisors at all Calaveras County Superior Court Case Number 19CV44471.
Thank you. Are there any public comments related to these items in the room, or any online?
We have no online public comment.
Thank you very much. We will have a recess to closed session and returning at nine o'clock. Thank you.
Please.
Good morning, and welcome back to the Calaveras County Board of Supervisors meeting for August 27, 2024. If you are able, you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Supervisor Hubbard, will you lead us this morning?
Thank you, Chair. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, and in this world of liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll have a quick report out on closed session.
True. Report out for today's closed session. Item one, pursuant to government code 54956.9D1, conference with legal counsel, re-existing litigation, Calaveras Planning Coalition versus Calaveras County Board of Supervisors at all Calaveras County Superior Court Case Number 19CV44471. Board action, no reportable action taken.
Thank you. We'll move to staff announcements. Lisa, kick it off.
Good morning, Chair. Lisa Medina, with respective board members and county councilor, CEO, and CEO, Lisa Medina, Environmental Management Agency. So I have a few announcements this morning. The first is we have a rabies-only vaccine clinic that's going to be scheduled for September 14th, Saturday, from 9:00 to 11:30. This will be held at Spence Ranch Feed and Supply in Angels Camp. This is a rabies vaccine-only clinic. No microchips and no other services will be provided. Again, that will take place on September 14th. The next vaccine clinic will be held October 12th here in San Andreas. So I'm really happy to announce that we have vouchers for our spay and neuter program for cats and dogs. In collaboration with the Calaveras Humane Society, we've been awarded a $175,000 grant from the California for all animals. And this was funding that was designated from our governor for animal shelters and administered through the team at UC Davis Corret Shelter Medicine Program. This grant will provide dramatically increased assistance to low-income pet owners in Calaveras County, those who have challenges affording spay and neuter for dogs and cats. And this will greatly help our shelter too, because we get quite a few of those puppies and cats. Vouchers can be used at nearly any veterinary hospital for a discount on a procedure, and depending on what the veterinarian charges, the procedures may even be free. So the vouchers will provide the following discounts on spay and neuter surgeries at participating veterinarians. And this includes Tuolumne and Amador and some of our sister cities as well. So we do have those lists provided not only on our website, but also on the Humane Society website. So for female dogs, $250 off; male dogs, $175 off; female cats, $175 off; male cats, $125 off. The vouchers also would be good towards a $20 service for rabies vaccine and $25 towards a microchip. So who qualifies? Calaveras residents. And how does it work? First, you must make an appointment for your pet surgery. And again, most veterinarians in Calaveras, Tuolumne, and Amador are participating, so this is great news. This is a great collaborative effort, especially between us and the Humane Society. Once you make an appointment, you can call us, CCAS, at 209-754-6509, or the Humane Society at 209-736-9417. So we are very happy for our Calaveras community and our other communities as well, and hope this program will greatly assist those in need, but especially decrease the number of animals that are unhomed, unhoused, or out there. My shelter is cool all the time, so this will hopefully greatly reduce that number. A huge thank you and shout-out to our partners at the Humane Society for being awesome humans and being part of our Calaveras team and mission to protect our Calaveras animals and our community. So really happy about that. That's a great collaborative effort, and that's what teamwork is all about. So our next announcement is we have an adoption event at the Calaveras. Next adoption event will be held at the Wild and Scenic Film Festival in September on the 14th in Angels Camp at the Bret Hart Theater. Please come by and visit our CCAS staff, volunteers, and some of our clerks. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Are there other staff announcements? Are there any online?
We have no, none online.
Thank you all very much. We'll move on to recognition and acknowledgement. And I will pass the gavel to Supervisor Stoppa.
Item two, proclamation, OES, proclaim September as Emergency Preparedness Month in Calaveras County.
Supervisor Stoppa, you have the gavel.
Thank you, sir. Whereas the Department of Homeland Security has designated September as National Emergency Preparedness Month across America. And whereas National Emergency Preparedness Month is an opportunity to raise awareness about the importance of emergency preparedness and to encourage all Americans to better prepare their homes and communities for emergencies. And whereas National Emergency Preparedness Month is also an opportunity to pay tribute to America's first responders who put themselves at risk for the safety of their fellow citizens, these brave law enforcement officers, firefighters, and emergency service personnel exemplify the compassion and commitment that helps strengthen our country. And whereas in the event of any natural disaster, scale, emergency, or terrorist attack, America's first line of defense is provided by first responders, including local law enforcement officers, firefighters, and emergency medical professionals, when properly trained and equipped, have the greatest potential to save lives and limit casualties after a disaster or terrorist attack. And whereas the Calaveras County Office of Emergency Services encourages citizens to make plans with and for their family members as to where to take shelter should a cascading event become imminent, and to make plans as to where to meet should family members become separated. And whereas because OES risk assessments include events that could cause disruption of life-supporting services, citizens are encouraged to develop to-go kits with supplies to support each other, family member, and pet for 72 hours. Eric, is there something you'd like to say? I'd just like to say that, you know, OES reaches out to all the different, you know, entities and people out in Calaveras County, and, you know, it's great how you organize and, you know, bring everyone into the fold for these events. Thank you.
Yeah, I'd just like to take the opportunity to reiterate the first-line responders in our county. As we've seen this summer, they continue to put boots on the ground and work their tails off in the heat that have kept the whole county safe. I mean, we've had dozens of fires, and we've only had one activation at a full scale. Their hard work really pays off, absolutely. And to our community partners, the all sorts of partners that work with us and build resilience and continue to better our plan. And I'm so grateful for the opportunity to come into a position and have such support. So, and a special shout-out, of course, to Balji, my coordinator here, who does an outstanding job and really, for the last year, kept the office running. So, thank you guys so much.
Thank you. And thank you, Balji. Anything from supervisors? Any public comment?
With that, I'll...
Do you have a motion?
I'll move this item.
Thank you, Mr. Toffenelli.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mr. Guaramendi. All those in favor?
Aye.
Passes on a 401 absent. With that, now therefore be proclaimed that September is Emergency Preparedness Month in Calaveras County, and that the Board of Supervisors encourages all citizens and organizations to take action to become prepared for any disaster or emergency. Thank you. It's not just OES, but everyone in the community that works with them, and, you know, the coordination among all the entities and people in the community is crucial. And, you know, that you're the vessel that makes it happen. Thank you.
Come on down and take a photo. Yeah? Have you ladies...
Well, there be a fish in the pond. Cristal, I don't know. That's right, that's probably right. So, Cristal, my goodness, that always came.
See, she every did her work, war. You know, I'll be there. She said, "There's a good one." Oh, work out, sweetie. We haven't all enough for the gram. These are survivors and victims. It's time to be here and answer to both of them. Yes, that's the way it means to tell them. They were didn't talk. Yes, the piece of tennis. We look at each other on course of... She goes, "I'm not using New York." I'm not, and that's... Good, never. Oh. It's a big show. Absolutely, I'm a show, it's one. Yes, close, see. I'll hold off right this time. I need, but he is flying. He is, well, I'm staring too. Perfect. The same, you know, take them, yes. He's like, "Yes, sir." First, notches that you wrap lies on, and what's going on? Still like standing down. Why the geek, you know? It's not, it's not. That's why you... That's why I'm here. And just... Yeah, I'm good, I'm good, this side, great.
Cut forth class in matters.
All right, tell it. Be good, let's... Stay good. All right. Good seeing you.
Ted.
Good seeing you.
Hi, Captain, good to see you.
All right, moving on to, we'll move on to general public comment. Clerk?
Any item of interest to the public that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the Board and is not posted on the consent or regular agendas may be addressed during the public comment period. California law prohibits the Board from taking action on any matter which is not posted on the agenda unless it is determined to be an emergency by the Board of Supervisors. If public comment is completed before the 30-minute allotted time period, the Board may immediately move to the next order of business. If public comment is not completed during the allotted time period, it will be continued as the last item of business in order to provide an opportunity for a remainder of comments to be heard.
Thank you very much. I think everybody understands, three minutes, you'll have a green light, yellow light, red light. I will cut you off if you're talking about an item that is on later on in the agenda. I'll ask you to stop and save those comments for that agenda item. So we'll move forward. Mr. Budner, would you like to begin?
My name is Christopher Budner, publisher of Calaveras2024Election.com. My allegations of campaign finance violations presented to the California Fair Political Practices Commission against two of five Calaveras supervisors, Hubbard and Follendorf, have broken upgraded commission-initiated complaints triggering state cases currently open investigating their suspicious campaign finance filings. My allegations of campaign finance violations were found to be credible and serious within the jurisdiction of the FPPC's investigative authority. Hubbard, allegedly not reporting income while a candidate, and Follendorf allegedly serially filed and falsified FPPC forms years beyond the legal filing deadlines with over $8,400 in residual labor union contributions to her 2020 campaign, vanishing while she was her own treasurer. Now imagine if the majority, three of five Calaveras supervisors, were concurrently subjects of active state cases for campaign finance violations. On April 17, 2024, 43 days beyond March's primary election, Supervisor Toffenelli finally filed a Form 497 24-hour contribution report. For over six weeks, Supervisor Toffenelli failed to account for SEIU 1021's March 4, $1,021 contribution to his 2024 reelection campaign. Toffenelli's failure prompted my allegation to the FPPC concerning his March 5, 2024 violation as a campaign non-filer for his allegedly willful failure to file his legally required Form 497 subsequently and allegedly committing perjury with his submission of a falsified written excuse. Supervisor Toffenelli, there is no evidence in the county's campaign docs e-retrieval system of you ever filing your legally required Form 497 by March 5, 2024, your so-called self-titled Report I. Yet suspiciously, your written explanation stated the following reason for amendment was, quote, "late contribution over $1,000," end quote. Supervisor Toffenelli, I've explicitly alleged to the state in complaint 08202024-02696 that you falsified the claim of your late filing being an amendment to a nonexistent Report I, additionally alleging you've committed perjury by falsely claiming your late filing to be an amendment to a nonexistent Report I. This serious allegation is upgraded by the state to being the third concurrent case against a Calaveras supervisor with justified demands for three immediate resignations for public corruption. My name is Christopher Budner, publisher of Calaveras2024Election.com.
Other public comments in the room? Seeing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda.
Consent agenda items are expected to be routine and non-controversial. They will be acted upon by the Board at one time without discussion. Any Board member, staff member, or interested party may request the removal of an item from the consent agenda for later discussion.
Thank you. Any Board members wish to remove an item?
Item number six, Mr. Toffenelli, I would like to pull...
Other items?
Just six.
Just six. Anybody else? Are there any members of the public that would like to pull an item?
4 and 14, please, Chair.
And 14. Anybody else? Anybody online?
We have no online requests.
Thank you. Any public comments on these items? Seeing none, with the exclusion of items four, six, and 14, is there a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Move by Supervisor Hubbard, seconded by Supervisor Toffenelli. All in favor?
Aye.
Carries four, zero, one absent. We'll move on to item number four. Mr. Budner, if you had a question?
Item four, action item, administrative office, authorize for Chair to sign the response to the June 30, 2024 grand jury report regarding animal services.
My name is Christopher Budner, publisher of Calaveras2024Election.com. The 2023-24 grand jury final report on Calaveras County animal services was publicly released 19 days beyond its June 30 deadline. This missed deadline overlaps the July 16 publication of the humiliating 21-page California Commission on Judicial Performance Report admonishing presiding Calaveras Superior Court Judge Timothy Healy. For California Penal Code 933C, the Board of Supervisors has 90 days to respond to the grand jury's final report, setting the response deadline at October 17. So why the rush? The grand jury's final report on the animal shelter is a whitewash, as is the Board's premature and reckless response scurrying the dominant issue of endemic negligence and inhumane treatment of animals. This Board's diversionary response and tactics distracts from the tragedy underlying a government riddled with public corruption that for decades has inhumanely treated generations of innocent, helpless, and wholly dependent animals in its custody. Shame on you all. The grand jury and Calaveras government has again squandered the public's goodwill and faith, spinning an illusion of hope you'd all finally do the right thing for our vulnerable shelter animals. If not for the wonderful dedicated volunteers who tolerate the same deplorable conditions animals are forced to survive in, the situation would be far more critical. I found the animal shelter, so follow along. $4.16 million is already allocated. Terminate LDA partner's contract, that's a half a million dollars. Put out a competitive bid for a revised appropriately scaled animal shelter. Terminate all plans and funding for the DA's new office building due to numerous allegations of her quid pro quo corruption, and that's $6 million more. Next, fully defund the CVB and Chamber of Commerce of undeserved TOT revenue for another $450,000 annually, and just like that, over $11 million for a new compassionate and caring Calaveras animal shelter. In conclusion, this shameful Board is demanded to withdraw its whitewash response to the grand jury until a public hearing has occurred. I have already launched a national public relations campaign engaging preeminent animal rights organizations, including PETA, focusing on nearly four decades of willful animal cruelty caused by an inhumane Calaveras government that refuses to prioritize funding due to its endemic corruption. My name is Christopher Budner. I publish Calaveras2024Election.com.
Thank you. Any questions from the Board? Any further public comment? Can I have a motion on this item?
So moved.
By Supervisor Stoppa, is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Supervisor Hubbard. All in favor?
Aye.
Carries four, zero, one absent. Item number six.
Item six, action item, administrative office, one, accept the work of Ford Construction Company, Inc., for the Rock Creek landfill Phase III surface impoundment and Phase III-A expansion as complete. Two, authorize for Chair to sign and record the associated notice of completion. And three, authorize administrative department to release retained funds.
Supervisor Stoppa.
Thank you, Chair. Mr. Kashi, thank you. Job well done. The timeframe, phenomenal. This has been, you know, it's only been a few years since you've come to the head of, you know, this whole project and everything. It was shaky in the wind. There wasn't a clear path forward. You organized everyone. You, you know, you were, you stuck to the straight and narrow and successfully, and, you know, just in the short time that you were gone, you know, I do want to put a thank you to Jennifer Ellis, you know, that picked up the reins while you were gone, and then, you know, helped carry the baton, so to say. I just, phenomenal job. It's rare to see something go as smoothly as it has, you know? There's a few bumps in the road here and there, but, you know, with a government project like this, thank you.
I would like to throw my voice in there as well. It's rare that you go up and you look at a landfill cell and go, wow, that's beautiful. But it was, it's a neat piece of construction. Hold on. Okay, any other questions? Supervisor Toffenelli.
I do. Jennifer, I echo what they say, what they've said. But I do have a couple of questions, because this is the release of the retaining funds. We had some issues. Some of it was leakage and some other issues. How do I know that all of those have been taken care of before we release these final funds? That we're not going to, next year, when we start having rain, we have some issues, and then we could be stuck with them? So I just, a little bit annoying some of the problems we've had out there, that they're been taken care of. Do we have any guarantee from them that...
Sure. So we went through some extensive testing, die-ball testing. So we went through and actually placed dye through all of our different drain ports and then watched as the water came through. And through this extensive testing that we did, we identified that the water in, it's actually leachate, coming, it's coming from cell two. So it really isn't coming within that contract zone. And we did do our due diligence with all parties involved, with our quality assurance staff, county staff, and Ford staff. We all together did two different sessions of testing to ensure that we were comfortable, all of us were comfortable with where this leachate was coming from. And it was identified as Phase II-B or A. We're not exactly sure, because it's all conjoined there. But we are, you know, confident that's where it's coming from. The system is acting as it's supposed to. It's all contained, and it's doing its job. So that's, that's also comforting. So again, it wasn't something that we were leaking and it was getting outside of our system. It was just identifying that there was some fluid coming through, and we wanted to make sure where that was coming from.
Okay, all right. So you're confident everything is fine?
Confident everything is fine.
Okay, that's all I needed to hear. Thank you.
All right, actually, if I could add something, I just want to thank your Board, actually, for supporting this project all the way through. As, you know, Ben has, or Supervisor Stoppa has mentioned, this has been in the works, it's been talked about for almost a decade. And I think that, I just want to extend my appreciation to your Board for identifying this as a priority project. And your Board has taken the initiative to ensure that we have a safe and sustainable place for our waste for at least the next 40, 50 years. So I appreciate that. Thank you very much. And I'd like to thank Ford Construction. We worked really well together. They were fantastic, awesome communication through the whole time. I think that we did a fantastic job with minimizing change orders for the gravity of the project. And so I'd like to extend my appreciation to them as well.
Stoppa?
Yeah, thank you for that, because, you know, as is said in the past, you know, when Ford Construction is better, they move mountains, you know? And I'm watching out my backyard with one. But, yeah, you know, they, when they get, when they get to work and they have to go, they, they have been a good partner in a lot of different construction and everything with us. So that's appreciated. And with that, if I may, I'd like to make a motion.
All right, I have a motion.
I'll second.
I'll second. My last word would be, as like 75% of my, of our residents who haul their own garbage, I appreciate the, the transfer station staff and as well as Rock Creek staff and all your other teams around. Seems like things are going well. Thank you. Very proud of our trash system. So we have a motion, we have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries four, zero, one absent. Thank you very much, Chair.
Thank you.
And thanks, Ben.
Thank you, Jennifer.
All right, we'll move on to item 14.
What's going on? Sorry. Sorry, Chair, one moment.
It's all right.
Our camera was... Okay, there we go. Item 14, agreement, Public Works, authorize for Chair to execute Agreement 10202409 for hauling services with R. Sutton Enterprises LLC in amount not exceed $250,000 for the period of July 1, 2024 through June 30, 2026.
Thank you. Mr. Budner, you had a question?
My name is Christopher Budner, publisher of Calaveras2024Election.com. I objected to today's consent agenda, item 14, specifically requesting that it be pulled because it requires further discussion and community input before being voted upon by the Board. The Follendorf for D4 County Supervisor 2020 campaign kicked off a sensuously catered fundraising event in Vallesito held on January 4, 2020, at the Sutton Barn. The Calaveras Enterprise reported on July 8, 2020, that supporters mingled over food and drinks while a DJ played music in the background. and drinks while a DJ played music in the background. Amanda Follendorf's FPPC Form 460 for the period of January 1, 2020 to January 18, 2020 includes Schedule C itemizing the below fair market value of the food served and failing to account for the fair market value of the facility, which may be well argued, it represents a substantial non-money contribution received by Follendorf's campaign from one or more members of the Sutton family and was not reported by her campaign as legally required on Schedule C. As an event professional with 40-plus years of experience, the Follendorf for D4 County Supervisor 2020 campaign kickoff event in January 2020 is estimated to have a minimum fair market value in excess of $6,000 for venue catering, beverages, table and chair rental, DJ and incidentals, of which less than $2,000 has been accounted for. So in light of these facts, I think it's unwise that you vote on any contractual matter benefiting any member of the Sutton family today as darkening clouds of campaign finance violations and state investigations loom above your compromised tenure as Calaveras County Supervisors. If you will agree, you'll pull the agenda item for further, for another day. If not, carry on. Regardless, additional FPPC complaints await. You already know where to locate the evidence. It's waiting for anyone to read on Calaveras2024Election.com. You can easily find it by Googling, quote, "Amanda Follendorf campaign finance irregularities under scrutiny," end quote. It will be the first return on the first page of your search results. My name is Christopher Bednar, publisher of Calaveras2024Election.com.
Any questions on this item from the boards? Other public comment? Is there a motion?
Sir, you know, especially as Ms. Follendorf isn't here to vote on it, number one. Number two, you know, that was four years ago. I'd like to make a motion.
Move by Supervisor Stoppa, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Supervisor Hubbard. All in favor?
Aye.
Carrie's 401 absent. Thank you. Okay, we will move on to regular agenda.
Regular agenda, item 15, resolution, human resources. Adopt a resolution approving, one, a new salary schedule for classifications within the Service Employees International Union Local 1021. Two, the salary schedule implementation process as outlined. And three, to describe changes to the position control list, including reclassifications, elimination of positions, and updated job descriptions.
Judy.
Good morning, Chair Gere Mending, members of the board. Judy Hawkins, Human Resources and Risk Director. I am very happy to bring to you today the final piece of the implementation of our class and comp study. And so we were able to come to an agreement with SEIU. So I'm bringing before you today the new salary schedule to adopt the implementation process, the elimination of positions, updates of job descriptions. And then also, an additional item is those employees that will be receiving less than 1.5% increase to their salary schedule and are not currently at E-Stat will be placed at the next step. And this is to make sure that it does not impact what would be their, their next step increase. And so I am happy to answer any questions. And I would like to also mention that that process will be implemented in all of the bargaining units effective the same date as this item.
Questions from the board? Judy, this wraps up our, this wraps up the class and comp.
It does. And we have had fantastic relationships with all of the bargaining, bargaining units. SEIU, I have to really thank their representative. She made sure that their members understood the impact of this and she did an awesome job of partnering with the HR department.
I would like to express my gratitude to our, our labor partners for really making this happen. Supervisor Stoppa?
Just, it's been quite the undertaking for quite some time and it took the collaboration of everyone from HR to the, the unions, to the employees and to get to this, this point. You know, it's appreciated all the way around. It's got it done.
Yes, and your board was, was instrumental in making sure we got through this. The admin office was fantastic to work with. And so it was, it took every, it took the entire village to make this happen.
Well, that's standing.
Could I, thank you. Could I just say thank you as well? Thank you for taking the extra time and going to take care of some of my constituents that had questions and issues. And I just really appreciate you and the SEIU really looking at everybody and taking care of everybody. It's been a really, what appears to be an amazing step for everybody. Thank you.
It's our pleasure at the HR office. My staff was fantastic in jumping and going to wherever they needed to go to be able to work with people to, to address all of the concerns. And so I think we have done quite an amazing job here, like I said, the entire village.
Right. Is there a motion to approve, or excuse me, public comment?
Who?
Seeing none in the room, is there any online?
We have no online public comment.
All right, is there a motion?
I'll move aside.
By Supervisor Stoppa, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Supervisor Stoppa, all in favor?
Aye.
Carrie's 401, congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Big one to check off, big box to check off.
Big box. Thank you.
Congratulations to everybody.
Yeah. Good job, board. Good job, staff. Got it all done. Okay, we'll move on to item 16. Do you guys need a second to set up? We're going to take five minutes and we'll, and we're going to start off on item 16. All right? Thanks.
This pool station road where it comes in, comes in right now. There'll be some adjustments made at pool, pool station road connection where we start to bring this last section of the new highway online to the immediate east of, of pool station road. That intersection is an area that's called Cut Five and you'll see some pictures of that. That's where a lot of dirt is being generated right now. As you continue on, you hit a big area of yellow and that is the area where we have that MSC wall and the channelization that's being created for Nassau Creek. Beyond that, you can see that's the last, very last segment of the, what will become the new main line for Highway Four. Basically, it's at rough grade, you know, now. The real controlling factor, you know, is that MSC wall and creek channelization, you know, area. So just big picture, you can see again, two thirds of this thing is, you know, being used right now. And the most control, controlling feature here is the MSC wall construction. So with the help of friends, we've been able to come up with a, a two-minute flyover of this three-mile route. So you can actually see it from a drone. I'll pause it in just a couple of locations, but this starts near the Bonanza Mine, you know, area. And then heads eastward. So I'll just go ahead and set this off. So you can see us transitioning onto the, the new highway. You can see that this is elevated. So that was both just for the general grade desired for the road, but also we're able to hide some of the special environmental areas have been covered with, with fill in that area. You continue up, you have to scorner property on either, you know, either side. You'll be coming up to an area where they have, I'll just let us get there. Again, if you only drive this fast, there's a tunnel for their cattle going from one side to the other. Now you can see Highway Four on the upper left corner, that's the old Highway Four, that's that Hunt Road traffic that's coming in right now to the temporary connection with the new main line. And I'm going to pause this in just a moment when we get to pool station road. Okay, I'm pausing, I'm pausing here because this is one area that is currently designed will have to be raised a couple of feet to connect at the grade, desired grade, plan grade for the new, for the new highway. I'm going to continue on immediately following this. Eastward is what we call the Cut Five area. It's just coming to view on the right there. So right now, this area, you can tell it's already been disturbed. This is where there's significant cut occurring in this area to lower it down and gain the desired grade in that area and also to generate fill in other areas of, of the project. You'll see another video where, where they're actually taking material from this area and then taking it to the MSC wall area. Let's just go a little bit further. And then you can see this will be the, probably the greatest logistical feat when the day comes where we have to connect both sides of this, of the new road segment where we're going to have to divert traffic. They're figuring out how best to do that so they could accomplish the grading that will actually connect these two sides and that'll become the new main line of, of the highway. Continuing on, and this was shot about a month ago, so it's kind of good to see this a month ago. We're coming up to the MSC wall area. This is one of those environmental areas that we want to protect. This is where the wall is going to go. You can see an excavator working in this area and that's a pool of water. And that's something that from the first day I got, first week I was here, went down and saw this area with Robert Patenger and you could see them dealing with spring water all over the site, having to create pools where they could pump it out, spray it. And it's just an area that just has ongoing, you know, water challenges, but they persevere. You're seeing just off to the side, at the very top here, you've got equipment starting to build the beginning, I'm not, foot, footing where they're going to toe a slope where they're going to build up that side of the wall area to achieve the grade where the road's going to go right along this general area where the wall is and then cut back into the new, the new road. This, this road to the right that you're seeing, that's just a construction road at, at this So as you get out of this area, then you're back onto what will be the ultimate, you know, main line. This is heading towards the Appaloosa area. And there you can see where the road, the new road is intended to be located. There's Appaloosa coming, you know, coming in. And then I'll let this run just a little bit more. And I think you're all, all very familiar with the Cherokee Bridge project that Caltrans took on as a separate but complimentary project to Wagon Trail. There's the new bridge. You can see the width of that new bridge compared to the width of the existing one with the black top. So it's, you know, about twice as wide, so much safer bridge. We'll talk about this just briefly, well, I'll just mention it now, that with the extended construction period on Wagon Trail, Caltrans is going to just go ahead and finish this project, tie it back into either side of the bridge. Will not go all the way as originally intended, but they need to get the, get the work done and let the contractor move on. So I'll let this just run out on the main line and then you're going to see just a quick segment on Hunt Road. So that's, what you just saw below was Highway Four. And now you can see the graded, you know, area in here where the Hunt Road is coming, are coming back to the new highway alignment. Here you can also see some cuts that are occurring in there. So there's been a lot of dirt movement in that, in that area. There is some storage of dirt in this area as well that will need to be cleaned up before this area is finalized. And then this shows how Hunt Road coming in at the top here. And this is where it'll ultimately come this way. And then that way, the old highway alignment can be rescinded and, and torn up. So that's, that is just a quick flyover. I mentioned Cut Five. This is the area that's just east of Pool Station Road. You can see here, these cars on the left are on the existing, existing highway. And you can see that that goes down, down, down. You can barely make out, just some dust occurring. The grade, it just gives you an idea just how steep the grade is. And yet you can see a vehicle parked here on the left and that's where the new, the grade of the new road basically is going to come in. But just, this will be a much quicker video, but just showing, this is their largest piece of equipment out there, that D eleven dozer. And then just going ahead and loading up trucks. And so right now, that's where the dirt is coming from. And, and then you'll see in a moment, you know, where, where it is going. Okay, so this is going to pick up on the eastern side of the MSC wall, wall area. And this is the dirt that you just saw being loaded on one side of the highway and brought over. And there's been a lot of this activity in the last, last month. This area that he's driving on right now didn't exist in that aerial view that I showed you before. They had been filling it up, getting it close to grade, as close to the MSC wall area as they can. And you can see the MSC wall in the background and I have some close-up pictures that we'll show you in a second. Okay. So now what you're looking at is actually, this is at the bottom of what is going to be the, the new wall in this area. The concrete that you see there is a leveling pad. That's where they're going to start putting the, you know, the blocks on between that leveling pad and then the slope that you see on the other side. It's between those areas, that's where they're going to create the channel that allows the water from Nassau Creek to travel behind that wall in its own, its own channels, concrete channel. And then it will, it'll come down the wall and then somewhere where I'm, yeah, you can see the cursor up there, somewhere in that area is where it'll cut back and go back into the, the native channel. But they have to get it between that protected area and the MSC wall. And right now, that's the most important thing that has, absolutely has to happen because winter is coming and we have to keep, we have to get this part, get this part done. If I just be interested, you can see on this far end, I'm circling a little point and that is the low point of this operation right now. That's what it looks like close up. So the water challenges from spring, you know, springs in that area are continuing to be a challenge. That's just a basically a large French rain that's collecting that stuff and taking it away. And our construction manager is saying that's operating, operating perfectly the way it's supposed to, to get, to get rid of that water. And then this is just a, again, a site, a view, the MSC wall site. And again, just to, you know, about where this equipped, piece of equipment is right now, from there. You know, the road's going to go right past that wall so that, back where that, the leveling pad is, imagine that wall thirty-foot higher. That's going to become the, the point where the road, you know, road comes up to and then continues across to connect to the other main line. So that's, this is where the real action is, this is what's controlling the pace at which we can finish this thing. This is going to take months to complete. So what's the major work yet to be completed? I kind of touched on this. First is that concrete channel for Nassau Creek and then the removal of the temporary diversion of pipes and things that we put in place at the, at the end of winter. But if winter starts, it may be able to handle it for a short time, but if we get into full-on winter, you know, we've got to have that new cement channel in place. The next thing again is the MSC wall complimentary, they, you know, they have to construct them, you know, with, with one another, staged properly. We have the new Hunt Road connection at Highway Four that needs to be done. That can be done independently, this, this other work. And then the last thing will be, once the wall is done, the road's brought up to grade and then it can be paved off. The last thing will be, you know, switching the traffic to the new highway segment between Pool Station Road and, and Appaloosa. As far as what drivers can expect in the near term, right now, the only thing that we're just making sure that they are aware that those trucks are going to continue to haul dirt across, you know, the highway. That seems to be going on without any accidents right now, but just want to make sure people are careful in that area so we don't, don't have any accidents. Funding, we've been able to get everyone up to speed on their, on their billing. So what you have is a funding table that you've seen parts of before. This has all of our expenses that either have been paid or incurred, but not paid yet all the way through the month of July. The only exceptions to that, I think we have one billing outstanding from the, for the tribe for July monitoring, for DACHN, for their engineering. And there's one pay estimate that's missing for bid work from Suket. But otherwise, this includes everything. And what this shows is that we're about forty-one percent expended, you know, based, excuse me, remaining. So we're about fifty, fifty-nine percent expended, forty-one percent left. If you were to treat right-of-way as basically encumbered, you know, because it is set aside just for that, there's reasons, reasons for the sizing of that amount that's remaining. If you were to show that as incurred as well, that would take it down to about thirty-six percent balance remaining. So you can tell we're getting closer, you know, now as we should because we're looking at two thirds of the main line is, is online and a lot of the remaining third is constructed or well underway. Now this, this does represent the numbers that are in the budget. So you can see all the various state funding sources there with STIP, SP One, SHOP, RSTP from the COG, but it shows a little over thirteen point seven million dollars, which is, you know, one hundred percent of what is available, you know, in our Road Impact Mitigation Fund. So these, these reflect the numbers that are in the, the unspent, unobligated amount of the project has been budgeted, but in coordination with this project total that you're seeing here. As far as anticipated completion, the Nassau Creek Channel, they hope to be out of there by November. They may need to get permit extensions to be in there, but we definitely need to get them, get them out of that channel, get that concrete channel in place and get that back water so that they can flow back into the native channel. The MSC wall, based on the last schedule that we have, would not be completed until April. And that's a process that I do have, by the way, have Robert Patenger here, Deputy Public Works Director, and also have Howard Zabel, our project manager, is online and can speak to this as well. But it will take several months to go through the process of putting into blocks and then putting in your fill. This is a different type of wall system that I've, I'm familiar with, but it's, has a very particular way that it has to be constructed. But ultimately, we hope to see a shift to the final segment of the new Highway Four alignment in June of twenty-five and, and hope to then deal with the incidentals after that in, in short order. So anyway, that's, that's my story and I'm sticking to it. So you're, the project is well, well underway to being, being completed, but all focus is really on that MSC wall and channel area. Do you have any questions?
Questions from part? Pardon?
Craig, thank you. I just had one quick question. I, could you remind me why we have to do the new Hunt Road connection as opposed to the way they're accessing it right now?
It's just part of what was part of the original design approved by Caltrans. I know Caltrans without, I wasn't there when they made that decision, but I know Caltrans likes to rescind their old highways as quickly as possible. For the people that commute on that road, it's going to be a much shorter connection, you know, to and, and from than having to backtrack. And then also the distance between the pool station intersection and Hunt as it is today is closer than what the traffic engineers like. I mean, I could have been in that conversation, I'm sure that all, all this comes into play and they'd like to, you know, get it constructed the way that it is, is planned.
Thank you.
Craig, I had a quick question. I noticed in the REM that we, I mean, we've obviously committed all our REM, but we're putting in this budget, anticipated REM fees. Is that correct?
Correct.
To get to the thirteen point seven because I think we got thirteen point two roughly.
Right. So there's about a half a million dollars of projected income for this coming, this fiscal year that we're in right now would be part of that.
We feel confident about that?
I've checked it with both people that work most closely with it and they feel, feel that's legitimate.
Okay, because that's all we got.
Exactly.
Gary?
Yeah, my questions have to do with your flyover thing that I was watching and looking at, you say it's a month old, that I'm concerned about east of the wall, going towards Appaloosa Road and the bridge that Caltrans put in.
Right.
None of that is near the wall, yet on the video, there's no, there wasn't anybody even working on it. It was partially graded and then it stopped and then nobody's working there at all. It's just like sitting there. And instead of us constructing all east up to the wall and make sure that's all done and connecting to that bridge that we were supposed to connect to, it's just sitting there. It's like, what, why are we just focused completing on the wall? Why don't we have crews working on both the west end of Hunt Road, finishing all that off? And then on the east end and finishing all that off? So all we have is the wall left. And once that's done, we just connect it up instead of waiting all the way till April or whatever to finish it off in June. I, I'm not sure what the, the schedule and the construction part of that is not happening.
Yeah. Well, I think I, maybe I did a disservice by putting so much emphasis on the wall area because that's, that's the most important controlling feature right now, but there is work happening. Actually, I just drove down there Monday when I was coming into work to see. And they actually were actively working on the Appaloosa side, starting to clear out, you know, stuff. And so there's some activity there.
Starting, that's my concern though, Craig. They're just starting. That, that bridge has been completed by Caltrans since early, way earlier this year. That's my concern. Why are we just starting on it? I, I don't, I, why is it not Unico as the construction manager and Duveri having Suket do their job and complete the sections instead of just whenever they feel like working on it? It seems like whatever they want to do, they're allowed to do. And the construction management portion of it and the project management portion of it isn't even, okay, just do whatever you want. I, I have concerns about it, even being done in June. We, we've been told so many different things that just haven't. And now I'm looking at it and it, it doesn't seem like there's much construction management going on.
Okay.
And I, you know, I know you're new to it, you're just walking into it. So I'm not dumping all this on you. Howard's here, but Howard, I, Howard, are you online?
I, I'm here. Can you, can you hear me?
I don't recognize you. What is that? You haven't shaved. Are you going to shave when this job's complete? Is that?
Pretty much, yes. It's a, it's a new look. I, I apologize for not being able to be there in person, but Supervisor Topnelli, to your, to your point, it's a, it's a very good question. What it comes down to is, you know, you, you heard Craig talk about the controlling operation of the wall and that area is a controlling operation. So in essence, what that means is even if they were to do work further to the east, you know, in the Appaloosa area, it, it would not, the, the project would not finish any quicker. So the, the focus when managing a project, you have to focus on the controlling operation or operations. And that's the work that if delayed will cause delay to the project. And so essentially the durations for that work further to the east that you're referring to are shorter. They'll be, and they'll, they will start in a way to where that, you know, that will not be the controlling operation. If they, if they were, just if Suket was working down there, we'd still, we'd still wind up in the same place for completion.
I'm not sure I agree with that scenario, but Howard, being in construction myself, we're focusing on one section instead of completing the rest of it. And, and so that may be controlling, but you don't know if the other section, because you haven't done much work there, is going to be another controlling section. And then you're going to be telling us in June, well, we didn't anticipate, we just started working on it and then we found this, so now it's, it's going to take over and we won't be able because we got to deal with this. Instead of dealing with it now and all the time that we should have and, and just completing it and constructing it. So when we get to the wall, we know we, we've already dealt with that. We're not putting it off. It just seems like you're putting it off. And in construction, I, I just don't, I've never been on a job where you put certain sections off. If you could get to it and construct it, excuse me, you construct it. But I, where, where we're at, and so we don't even know, again, when we get to, they start grading that and getting to that section and connecting to that bridge, we know that's an area because it's a creek, that's why there's a bridge there. We don't know what's going to happen, but yet we're going to wait till the end to determine, okay, well, oh, we got another problem instead of construction that now.
You know, that's something we had, I'm just sharing with you kind of the, the general approach of, of scheduling a job and, you know, and resources, you know, also, you know, just availability of resources in general. But your, your point is, is well taken. I do understand the concern and, you know, I'll go back to the construction management team and we'll have that discussion and, you know, with Suket as well and see if, if, you know, there, if that makes sense. And I, I guess the way I'm looking at it is when, when does it make the most sense to start that? And, you know, to your point, understood, we don't, you don't want to wait to, to where you're doing something where that winds up driving, where that becomes a controlling operation.
Thank you, Howard.
My reflection is correct, I think, when it comes to the Hunt Road, unless we were to tell them, you know, don't, their plan is to try to get that finished and paved off before weather comes in because that, that stands all by itself. It just needs to be finished, paved and it can be put into service. So I, I believe that's the plan, you know, there, but we can double check with that at this, this week's meeting.
Do, do we have, do we have, we're, we're looking at what, what we're being told here and presented about the Nassau Creek Channel being completed in November twenty twenty-four, the wall in April twenty twenty-five, and then the finishing segment and opening it up in June of twenty twenty-five. Is there a schedule? Is there an actual schedule? Do we have scheduling and, and not only a weekly scheduling, but a monthly schedule and then having weekly meetings to make sure where we're at on the schedule to meet these dates?
So I can answer that or speak to that a little bit, Supervisor Topnelli. So the dates that Craig shared with you, those are our schedule projections. So there are, there are a couple of different schedules. There is the, there is the contractual schedule for working days that the contractor is obligated to, to update monthly. There are look-ahead schedules that are updated weekly. Those are shared Thursday mornings with the, with the weekly construction meetings with the project team. There is also a project completion schedule that the CM team has developed to project when we think this job is going to finish. So back to the first schedule that I mentioned, the contractor, the contractual schedules and the monthly updates, the contractor, I think, as, as you've been told previously, is very far behind on those contractual, on that contractual commitment. They, there are significant payment withholds being administered until they get those caught up. I will say that in the last month, they've made a lot of progress. They, we have three updates submitted and approved. So they're making progress. They are still ten months behind, which is unacceptable, but they're working on it. And again, we have wordministering payment withholds. The, we, we put together a projection to come up with that June date based on Suket's original CPM schedule and the durations and the logic, the activity logic in that. And what we did was we plugged in the start date of when we started the, the channel work. And so that's where we are with that. It's not the official schedule, it's our best projection. It's better than nothing. Nothing is not acceptable. So we, it's the best we can do. And what we need, what the team needs to do on that is, is keep that updated to make sure that we're staying on track with that projection. And hopefully here over the course of the next couple of months, Suket gets caught up on the official schedules. And our, our sense on that is if we're looking at things correctly, that should match. that should match what, you know, what we are estimating or projecting.
So my question, can we?
Yeah, please.
You talked about 10 months behind on their schedule. Can you explain 10 months behind? What are you talking about? What they've already done for the last 10 months or 10 months projected ahead?
Their, their official schedule, they, we are on the, I think, the September 23 update right now.
Okay.
Maybe the October. I can't recall exactly where. So we're, we're, we had a, a meeting with the contractor scheduler, with our, with the CM team scheduler. And these are both professional schedulers on both sides to, we had a meeting, you know, a month, four or six weeks ago it was, to, here's the approach, here's what's needed. And they have, so they have made a lot of progress. But they are, when I say 10 months behind, it's their official schedule updates.
Okay.
Reflect work that's, you know, that was 10 months ago.
I just wanted to get that clarified. Thank you. Because behind may mean one thing or another thing. I just wanted to get it. Thank you.
Right. It doesn't, yeah, I understood. It's, when I say behind, it's not the work, it's the schedule update, the, the, the actual schedule update. So.
I've made most of my comments in prior meetings. I'll hold those. You have a item here on this funding summary of RSTP cog, but there's an asterisk. What is the purpose of that asterisk? And what is that telling us? I didn't find the asterisk in the notes.
Do you remember?
It's on the funding by source, RSTP cog asterisk. I always notice asterisks. So what does it mean?
It's like goodbye.
Yeah, unless you remember.
That was funding that came, that was, I believe, associated with, it came from the Council of Governments and they, they passed it on. I believe I, I want to say it's the COVID funding, but I'm not exactly sure. I don't remember anymore. There was an explanation on the.
We, we had $500,000 event scheduled, RSTP funds, and there wasn't a project. So we gave it.
That's correct.
But with an asterisk, that's usually a footnote.
Right.
You know, and you're just to find where that money came from. But what's the asterisk mean? What's the footnote?
Just to give the explanation that Supervisor Topnelli remembered about where that, where that money came from.
I apologize. I cut and pasted this from a broader spreadsheet, just the summary. And I didn't, I didn't catch that or it would have left the footnote or taken asterisk off.
What is the, we have here funding summary. We have lots of stuff and it comes out, looks good. But what is the total cost of the project as it stands today?
Well, we're projecting the 50, the 53 million. What's been incurred, cost incurred is just over 31 million.
You're projecting 53 million?
Correct.
Okay.
For Mr. President's side, please.
And I, sorry, just to weigh in. I just got a message that, that you're correct. Mr. Pedro, it was a cut and paste and the little asterisk says that it was approved by the cog board. That's the note.
Any other questions from the board? Seeing none. Any questions from the public? Thank you, Craig. You've got the next item, also. Seventeen.
Item seventeen, agreement, Public Works authorized the interim director of Public Works to execute contract change order six zero dash zero one to contract one two zero zero two one zero three with Suket Construction LLC in the amount of $2,100,000.
Hey, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Before you, for your consideration is a change, change order, a supplement to change order sixty. That was approved back in March of, you know, March of this year. It was covering an area that's basically on either side of the MSC wall area as well as the pool station and Hunt Road, you know, areas. That originally called for 90,000 cubic yards of material that was estimated, that still remained to be moved at an estimated cost of $855,000. I want to pause here and say, you know, where did that estimate, you know, come from? My understanding has been once we started running into all these various cultural areas that we had to avoid and interrupt the normal flow of the planned dirt work on this job. So different, with different areas as they were worked on, individual change orders were approved, you know, to, to deal with the dirt work. This eight fifty-five, and again, Howard can speak to this, surely better than I, but he went back and looked at what the average cost per cubic yard was when he looked at all of those prior T and M jobs to move dirt. And it came in at around fourteen dollars a square foot, somewhere in there. You apply that to the 90, 90,000 and that's where the $855,000 estimate came from. Not, not unreasonable. Looking at past history on this job, that's where the eight fifty-five came from. But nevertheless, as we sit here today, you know, that we have in fact approximately 29,000 cubic yards of road excavation that has been completed between mid-March and July at an estimated cost of $1,992,000. And there's a chart that summarizes each of those months, the cubic yards and the costs that are estimated costs. And then on attachment three, there's a description of the type of complex earthwork that's been going on, on this project, and list the major excavation activities undertaken of each of those months. Why wasn't the, the county informed about this overrun sooner? One of the problems that we've had in general with the contractor is it's the strangest thing. They, they just don't bill timely. And that's a rarity in my, my experience. Usually a contractor wants to bill as quickly as they can. That has not happened. So we were not, we, we did not have billing information to judge where we were in relation to the $855,000. So the project team didn't realize that costs were being exceeding the $855,000 budget cap until estimates were started to be prepared by Unico. And, and I've provided information about how those estimates are prepared. That's, they're, they're still estimates, but they're thoughtful in the sense that we have had information on who was working for Unico on, on this work, what equipment was being worked with on, on this job. And when they took the hours for labor, hours for various equipment, they applied their certified payroll wages to the, to the labor hours and took the Caltrans equipment rates to the equipment. And that's where the estimates came, you know, came from. How much more roadway excavation will need, be needed between now and the end of the project? If you do the math of the 90,000 cubic yards we expected originally, less than 29,000, that leaves around 61,000 left from the original estimate. And talking with Howard even this morning about this, there is an additional 20,000 cubic yards that's still a question that they're looking at. I think I erred in, in tying it to the wall. There is a, there is about 20,000 cubic yards of material that is select material. It's part of the construction of this particular wall. You can't just have regular dirt. It has to meet certain criteria. So it compacts properly and, and it will do, will do what it needs to do structurally. And again, Howard can speak to this, you know, better. But that was included in the cost of the wall. And yet, having said that, there's still an issue of, of, again, it just happens to be about 20,000 cubic yards of material that's still a question. If indeed, we do have another 20,000 of cubic yards, add that to your 61,000 that has not, was not moved previously, that would leave us 81,000 cubic yards that still needs to be moved between now and the end of the project. So those projections are still being refined. And maybe I'm going to pause here and Howard, can you clean up what I just said or, or add anything on that point?
Sure. Thanks, Craig. So just a couple of, of quick points. The, the, the $14, I think you mentioned a square foot. That's, the, the number is 1450 a cubic yard for the roadway acts. So just to clarify that, all the other information was, was correct, you know, based on 90,000 cubic yards of material. The, as far as the, the 20,000 yards goes, just a couple of clarifications on that. I do want to let you all know that the select structure backfill, that is in round numbers, it's about 20,000 yards, maybe a little bit less. That was part of the price. That was part of that $6 million price for the MSC wall. And that's for furnishing and importing new material, placing, backfilling, compacting, all that. The additional 20,000 that Craig is speaking to, it, it, and that, it's a different classification. That's the, the roadway excavation, right? So that's the, the roadway excavation is what we're paying for at time and materials. And Craig is correct that we're analyzing that a bit further because it's not, the case isn't that there's an extra, an extra 20,000 yards emerged. What it is, is there's 20,000 yards, that, that bit item, where that work involves cutting and filling. And so essentially, there was 20,000 yards of material that was going to be placed in that area where the MSC wall now is, in that area where the select structure backfill is now going to, is going to occupy. So essentially, that 20,000 yards has to go elsewhere on the project or be lost on the project. That is something that the project team is looking on where, and we've been looking at that for, for several months, where to fatten up slopes to lose that additional material. So I wouldn't necessarily say it's a, that there will be, there will be some extra costs, but it's not, it's not, the, the extra is not the same type of work, the same extent of work as the, the roadway is on the project.
Okay. Well, let me continue on there real quick. So what is the revised total cost for the roadway excavation contemplated under this, under CCO sixty? Already mentioned, already mentioned the $1,992 for the work performed between mid-March and July 20. Again, these are estimates, not bills yet. Then we would project another $1,940 for the work to be performed between now and the end of the project. So combined total could be, could be as high as $3.9 million. You subtract that eight fifty-five original budget from that and that leaves a potential net increase of $3,077,000 or, you know, 3.1 rounded. Given that we're, the project team is still refining these estimates, it's recommended that your board authorize myself to execute CCO sixty dash oh one, the supplement in the amount of 2.1 million. That should cover Suket's costs through the end of September. And then staff would return to your board at a September 24th meeting with an update and recommendation on a supplement number two that would take us to the end of the project. And that's being done purposefully because we're hoping to have better information instead of estimates. We'll have some actual dollars that we're dealing, you know, dealing with, actual bills that our project team can go through and analyze and validate. We also anticipate that the, the work is going to decrease or be of a less expensive nature as Howard was just speaking to. That'll give us extra time to look at all those things and come back with as thoughtful of a recommendation for, for the remainder of this dirt work. So I've given you the math of how we arrived at the 2.1. So that's what I'm recommending at this time is just supplement one to make sure we have enough to get through September. It could, could get us further. But I would hold off on going for the full amount until we have, I'd like to see better numbers, actual bills that we can analyze as opposed to the estimates. But right now, we do have a contractor out there who's working, not covered, you know, by the, the change order. And we suggest that we don't want them to stop. You know, right, right now is absolutely worst time. They've got to continue to get out of that creek channel, get that cement channelization in place and get that wall, you know, going up. The, you know, the winter's coming and we got to get out of that, get, get out of that area. So maybe we missed it on, in, in tracking this properly, up to that eight fifty-five. But now we know we have a contractor doing, doing work on our behalf in a very sensitive area. So the financing, mentioned that this is the projections I put in the status report. Those are the numbers that the FY 2425 fiscal year final budget is based upon. So I've worked with CEO Hitchcock and making sure that is, that is in there. And we just recommend that your board, you know, grant approval of this change order or authorizing me to sign it.
Questions from board? Harry, you want to snort?
Yeah. I, I just, this, this, we, they had a change order. They have a change order right now. A change order for $855,000 for 90,000 cubic, cubic yards. That was their change order. How we have two, we have a project manager and a construction manager come back and tell us that they had no idea just because Suket didn't bill is, is just crazy to me. Do we not have people out there on foot watching what's going on and not seeing it? When Suket hit $855,000, they never came forward and said, hey, we're at the end of our change order? What do you want us to do? Suket's running this whole project and has run this project. Now we're supposed to come up with another 1.9 million or whatever, it's 2.1 million minus 855 or, or, excuse me, 1.992 plus 970 minus eight fifty-five or 2.1 million dollars when they didn't have direction to do it? They hit their, top of their change order. They, they, they just kept on working and now they expect to give us a bill? And this is, oh, by the way, this is what it is. And then we're supposed to believe this 970 is going to get through August and September when the eight fifty-five didn't even get through a third, didn't even get through a third of the cubic yards that they were supposed to do for that eight fifty-five. So I, I don't know how I'm going to vote for this and justify my vote to the public based on all the figures and everything that's coming to us and presented to us. And in fact, it even says, we're still refining these estimates. What, what does that mean? This is just throwing a number out there saying, okay, we need another 970. But it could be the same way. We come back and, and Suket did another 2 million over the 970 and we still have 50 cubic yards to move. There, there's not, if they're going to accept the change order, then the change order is the change order. And they need to be on top of it themselves, not us. But we do have project managers and construction managers that should be on top of it, have somebody out there a day just to find the amount of equipment, amount of men and hours that are being worked so they can have somewhat of an estimate for this. When we get near the $970,000 that you're asking for, they get us through. So we don't run into this situation again. It, it, it's blaming it on Suket. You're just saying that, well, they didn't turn any billing into us. So we had no idea. How, how are you managing? How is that management?
You, you have, your concerns and your, your frustration are, are completely legitimate. I, I wouldn't. I, I wouldn't disagree with any. I, I could, a few more thoughts to maybe put this into context. So we wrote a time and materials or force count change order for $855,000. It was based on the historical cost, force count cost of the, of the dirt to that point. That was the best information we had. We wrote, we, that's how we came up with that budget. The way that it's supposed to work is the contractor bills as they go. They can bill one day at a time if they want. For reasons I'll, I don't think I understand, and I don't think ever will, their billings are, are very, very delayed. And so it's a, it's a legitimate question to say, why didn't you know about this? Because we should have, the project team should have. When I look back on the history, we, and, and just for, for context, the, the 1.992 million dollars, that is an estimate of that, and that, that's through July 20th. We have only received, received and approved bills through April 20th. The bills received through April 20th, they billed 360,000 in round numbers. The, the agreed amount was 262,000. So, so, you know, about a third of it was, was knocked down. So the CM team agreed to 262. Two weeks ago, the CM team received billings from April 20th to May 20th in the amount of about $850,000. The CM team hasn't placed a value on that so far of about $685,000. So what we've seen for the two packets of invoices so far is, you know, what we feel the entitlement is, is, you know, is a bit less than what they're billing. These are detailed packets. They take a while to review. The way that it went was week after week, we, after the, after we executed CCO 60, we asked where their billings are, and each week it was, we'll have something next week, and then next week it was the next week. So that went on for, you know, four to six weeks. We got to about the middle of June, and I, I told, you know, I told Unico, we need to know where we're at because in my mind, you know, I, I need to know where we're at. So you need to do an estimate. We don't have their bills yet, but we do, since we do track hours, labor, equipment, materials every day, we need an estimate of where we are. That estimate took, you know, another four-plus weeks to, to produce. And, you know, essentially, that leads us to where we are now. So it's not how, it doesn't, it hasn't gone how it should have. We should have known earlier, and, you know, I will say, you know, you know, on all ends, right? Everybody should have been more on top of it. So we had the information sooner. However, I will say that having the information sooner, it would have given your board the opportunity to digest that, more opportunity, and, and think about the implications. But it would not have changed the, the final outcome, the dollars either that they have submitted or the dollars that we've, that we have agreed to, to date.
Howard, I, I'm not so sure about that, but let me, where's the 970,000 coming from? Based on the other one was 14.5. What's the 970? What are you basing that off of?
I'm, I'm not sure the, I'm not following the 970.
970,000 estimated cost for August and September work.
Oh, yes. I'm sorry. So that is based, so what, what we asked the CM team to do was go through, during this exercise of estimating, what, what are we looking at? It's based on an average daily cost, an estimated average daily cost of $25,000 a day. So that's, that's where that comes from. It's a rough estimate. As Craig mentioned, our thought process is the dirt work from this point moving forward, we think it will be much less costly. If you look at the, the unit price for, for comparison's sake, our change order is based on a, on an absolute unit cost of 1450 a cubic yard. If you look at the, the 1.992, 29,000, that's, that's just under $70 a cubic yard.
Correct.
You know, four and three-quarters times as expensive. Some of the reasons for that, you know, there was rock, there was blasting, there was wet grade out of the starting gate in the beginning of the spring, so unsuitable subgrade, there were the water issues, the high groundwater at, at the wall that Craig spoke of. So all those things are wrapped into that collectively. And I think, you know, tho, those issues would have, they, they would have been, they would have been extras regardless of whether or not all the roadway X was timed and materials. It just, given the situation, we, where we are on the job with this large amount of, of essentially T and M work, it, it, it really makes that, it makes it sting, you know, a lot to have those additional, those additional issues come up.
Can you, can you tell me what the original bid from Suket was for this wall?
For the wall was, I think it was $6,014,000?
Excuse me?
$6,014,000.
No, they're original.
For the wall?
It was like 10, it was like 10 million, wasn't it?
Oh, the, oh, the original, oh, I'm sorry. Yes, yes, yes. It was, it was about, it was about 10 million, yes.
And so I'm looking at this, and their change orders are totaling about 4 million, plus the 6 million they got for that change order. We're looking at, yeah. Here's where I'm at. In order for me to vote for this, I, I need some numbers because we, we've voted on so much things that nothing, and been told so many things and nothing since, since back in February that it's just not, there hasn't been anything correct. First off, the 970, somebody needs to, if we do this change order, Suket and Unico, when they get to 970 and they're not done, stop.
Right.
That's the extent of the change order, what's left, if anything is left. Okay? They can't go past the change order and expect to get paid for it. That's not in the contract. That's not what the change order is.
You're absolutely, you're absolutely correct. I am, I, I'm very surprised that Suket hasn't brought this up. I, I'm, it's, it is very surprising. That's their job as contractors, to know exactly where they are. It, it's, it's our job as well to, to know roughly where we are. And it just, you know, like I said, there was, there was a lag in this. It's not acceptable at any level. I, so, look, I, I understand the, the extreme frustration at this situation. The money, it, it has to be managed more, more closely. And, and I think it is. You know, I, I think it is for where we are right now. Should, should not have taken this long, but, but it did, and I do apologize for that.
One last question. This 970,000 for August and September.
Right.
What, what, that number, was Suket involved in, in any way in coming to that number?
They were not. That, they were not. Would it, what that number comes from? We took the tentative work agreements. So every day for the time and materials work, Unico's inspector in the field gets with Suket's foreman, and here's the labor and equipment and any materials, usually it's not materials, for roadway X, right? Labor and equipment, they agree on hours, and they sign what's called a tentative work agreement. That tentative work agreement, it's from that that Suket creates extra work bills. So right now, we are not waiting for Suket's extra work bills. We are preparing estimates of the extra work agreed to in the field by the, with those tentative work agreements. So that is something, and that's why, you know, back at the, I think it was the end of June, something like that, where, where I, you know, I got with, or began July with Suket and, or I'm sorry, with Unico. It's like, yeah, we need to be doing this. We're not getting these bills in a timely manner. We, we need to know where we are to avoid a fire drill and a surprise, you know, like this. So I, I agree. I totally agree with what you're saying.
All right. Thank you, Howard.
Supervisor Hubbard?
To, to me, Howard, it just feels like the tail wagging the dog. And, and I, these projections, I mean, unless Suket actually sticks to it, I, I don't see how they're going to hold anyway. And it doesn't seem like anybody's holding Suket accountable, and I don't know how to do that. But it just seems like, again, three or four months down the road, there'll be another set of issues. How, how do we, how do we stop it?
So that, that's a great question, Supervisor Hubbard. And, I mean, it is a great question. The thing to keep in mind for this is with the time and materials work, the force count work, it is, it is at the owner's direction. So essentially, it's at the, the CM's direction. So the CM is, so what does that mean? We, we can speak to, you know, labor and equipment that's on the project, and, and the team is looking at those things. So one of the big drivers for this cost is that big bulldozer that, that Craig mentioned, the D-11T. It is an extremely expensive piece of equipment. It's, it has a reduced rate. You, you, there's a, a rate when you're operating it, but there's also a rate on that piece of equipment, as every piece of equipment, of what's called an idle time rate. It's still a substantial amount of money. So we have been talking to Suket about when can we get rid of that piece of equipment because it's very costly, what makes the most sense? And so that, you know, to answer your question, that's one thing that can be, you know, closely managed. And, you know, it's one of those things where you don't want to pull it off too soon. The benefit of that piece of equipment is you can get through rock and harder material without having to blast, but you're not exactly sure how some of these areas are going to go. So you make the best educated estimate you can based on the, the previous work in the area, the previous performance of that machine. So all that's being weighed. So we are, I, I will tell, tell you all that, that's being discussed, you know, multiple times a week, right? When we can get rid of that piece of equipment. So it is, you know, just doing the best we can at managing, managing the situation. And, you know, when you see costs like this, I, I understand the, the conclusion that you, you come to that, well, it's not being managed, look how expensive it is. It is very expensive, but I do want to tell you, you know, the, the, the team is, is trying to manage it as best they can, manage the costs as best as they can.
Not so much a question as a statement. A few things, you know, with these questions and answers.
I heard an answer to like, okay, monthly scheduling is behind all the way to last October '23. So they're trying to catch up now. Billings behind exponentially, and we're trying to catch up now. And then I heard the answer to Mr. Toffinelli, yes, you know, these things fell off and, you know, top to bottom, there's, you know, it's an issue, but it wouldn't change where we're at today. Well, I have to say BS because we would have kept track where that billing is. Scheduling would have been there. Now, with management not watching scheduling or billing and not knowing that they're that far behind until recently, how are they tracking to make sure that, that scheduling and that billing was actually the work that was getting done? If, I mean, if they didn't know that stuff was getting reported. I mean, honestly, closer track of things on time and timely would have made for a more expedient process through managing a project. That's, that's elementary. So I just, you know, that type of answer, I can't accept because it's just not true.
All right. Another further questions? I have a quick, I have a statement and a question. First off, not, we're acting like some of this is new information or, 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 oh my, this has come up. Howard, you and I in this boardroom, round and round back in January and February before we started this construction season, and we recognized that the construction management team had not been holding up their side, and we were told it's going to get better. I'm not so sure it's getting better. It's certainly getting more expensive, and we paid millions of dollars to have this project managed. And it looks like it's not being managed, as I think Supervisor Stopper said, the tail's wagging the dog, and we're being led around. That's a statement, and that's how I feel. And I've told you that in private, and I've told the board that here in public. My question is, in our presentation, we said 53 million bucks. Craig says that's the number. Do you agree? Is that the number?
I do agree. That is the number based on the, you know, the, the new, that's the number based on the new dirt cost per day, right? Roughing that in. Again, that's the, I, I think it's, I think it's on the conservative side. We've had internal discussions on that and, and, you know, with, both with Unico, with Craig and Robert, you know, about what to, what to share with, you know, what to share with the board. We want to paint a realistic picture, don't want to, to make it so overly conservative. But look, I'm not going to, I'm not going to sit here and pretend like our estimates have been overly conservative. Obviously, they haven't. There have been, there have been things, it, you know, out of, I think, anyone's control that combined with the, you know, the current status of where things are, it just, it makes it even a more bitter pill to swallow. I will say, I do think, I, I agree with the estimate to answer the question. The other thing I want to share with the board to put things into perspective, this is based on, you know, part of this packet, there was, and Craig's statement was, well, we moved 29,000 cubic yards of the 90. And so a good question is, well, how is that number calculated? And I want to share with you that that is a, that's a rough number. It is not, that, that's, and it's based on load counts. Very rough, and essentially, it's for progress payment purposes, only just monthly estimates. What happens at the end of the project? You know, there'll be a full scan, topo of the whole job, so we'll know the final quantity. But I, I, and again, I don't want to, I don't want to give false hope, but that 29,000 number, that could be, that could be a little low, right? Because that assumes, that assumes the inspector and the foreman have counted everything perfectly. You saw the operation, you saw the videos in there with the off-road dump trucks, the articulated trucks. There's, you know, that, that's not a perfect science. It's basically a rough estimate as you go month to month. So I want to throw that out there, that that number is not, it, it's not a precise number. But I will say, just rambling on, I, I do think the 50- But I will say, just, I'm rambling on, I, I do think the 53 million, for, for where we stand now, I, I think that's, I, I agree with that estimate.
You think that's, number's gonna hold? You are a construction manager.
I, I do think it, I do think it's gonna hold. I do.
Can I ask something, Mr. Beck?
Of course.
How do you have a load count when you don't have your monthly reports or billing in?
Two, two different things. The load count, that's done daily, that, that's done between the inspector and the, and the foreman. Again, that's not a, all that, all that does is get you in the ballpark. But, so, you, and, and let's just say, this wasn't a, a force count item, right? It was typical item. You don't do a topo every month or even every quarter to get a precise quantity. You do an estimate, and that's what the load count method is, it's an estimate. So it, it's, yeah, it's independent of, of the billings, just to get a rough idea of where you are.
Questions from the board? I don't, I, I'm, I'm, your microphone. Other questions from the board? Is there any public comment on this item?
Just, just one other comment, it goes back to the budget that we were talking about earlier. I know it's, 53 million is the best number that we have, you know, we have right now the best information that's available, but I also wanted to draw your attention that as far as what money are we drawing down right now, it's all been state. We haven't actually drawn a penny from RIM yet. It's budgeted so that we can, you know, we can have it, but it'll be the last money out the door.
That, that, wouldn't the billing catch up? It catch us up?
Right, when everything gets squared away.
A year ago?
You know, that, if there's savings, it'll be in, in RIM, if, if there is.
Go ahead, Penn.
Just curious, without billing, how, billings up to what, October 23, right now?
No.
July.
So, of this year? So we, they're caught up to billing up to that point?
Some of it, some of it are still pay estimates. All, all of, all of your, your Unico, Duverie, Dockin, their subcontractors, Alta, ESA, those are pretty current. I think, I'm missing two actual bills for July, otherwise we're totally up to date with, with billed numbers, and we, period. Then when it comes to Suket, we have pay estimates up through June, I think it is, for the bid work, and then, then we have this dirt work that we've been discussing. So that's all, all been estimates from, you know, April, excuse me, that'd be from, April forward.
So, so, would those estimates, are they accountable to those estimates? There are, so the estimates are just for budgeting purposes, for purposes of, you know, discussions with, with, between Craig and me, and, and, and the board, of course, so we can know where we're at, because we can't, we can't compel Suket to, to bill any faster. I, I've, you know, I, I haven't seen this before, where, where billings take so long, it's their internal process. We, and we, we, we've talked about it and tried to convince them to, you know, to do, to take different approaches, for whatever reason, they, they haven't chosen to, to do that. But the, the billing, to, to your point Supervisor Stopper, I think you, the October 23, just to clarify, that was in the context of schedule updates, not billing. So the billings are, have, are complete.
They're both behind, but, you know, the, the scheduling is much farther behind.
Much far, correct, scheduling's much farther behind. The billings, Suket's billings are complete through June 20th, excluding the roadway acts, right? So roadway acts, CCO 60, we have received bills up through May 20th. Well, you know, ju- just to reiterate, they, they both seem late hand in hand for a very good reason. Harder, it's harder to track, and harder to go back and, back and verify, you know, on, on their end. I know, but, you know, we could, we could debate that all day, but that's my point of view, and I'm not changing it.
All right. So we've had public comment, we've had discussion, we have an item in front of us, I'll call the question.
I, I have a question.
Supervisor Stopper?
He's to the nose.
No, just not a four-fifths vote, Craig.
No, there's, there's a split in how jurisdictions handle that.
I'm sorry.
There's a split in how jurisdictions handle that, the law isn't especially clear on the point.
What is your counsel?
I, like I said, there's no, there's no case on it. I think that, there's no budget transfer associated, so it's, it's not certainly a four-fifths. And different, different counties do it as a three-fifths, others as a four-fifths, there's no clear law.
Okay. I'm looking for, I'm looking for a one-armed attorney, so, I don't know, on the other hand, what is the call?
I asked this question, I'm sorry. I asked this question earlier, we've already budgeted the amount in, in our budget, not trying to.
This item does not include a budget transfer.
It does include a budget transfer.
That's correct.
So that, that, at that point, you know, as we've used it in the past, it's a three-fifths vote.
Counselor?
That's, that is how we've done it in the past.
Counselor, you agree to three-fifths?
As, as best as I can tell, yes.
Okay. All right, three-fifths vote, is there a motion?
Wait, 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 wait.
Go ahead, here.
I'm sorry, but, we, we haven't transferred this money to the budget. We did a preliminary budget, we've added this money in from RIM since then, we're going in next month for our final budget, where all of this is in there. We're gonna be voting on this, all of the money that's being transferred in there at that time. It was never presented at preliminary budget. So, so, and, and that being said, then we are transferring money.
This item, I mean, I will let, I will let the experts speak to the budget pieces, but I can say that this item does not include a budget transfer.
Okay.
It was in preliminary. Please, hold on a minute, listen.
Yeah, I got you. Teresa, did you want to add anything?
No, I just wanted to reiterate, counsel is correct, this item does not include a budget transfer. The funding for this will be part of the final budget.
In the, I thought in the preliminary budget that those funds were encumbered to be used, right? Is that correct?
My, my understanding for the preliminary budget, the one adopted in June, is it reflects what the board directed at your May 21st meeting, which included that, you had this, the, you already approved the Change Order 60, the original, and then you had Change Order 63, which was the wall.
Okay, so then.
It takes that through the wall.
If that's the scenario, then we did encumber those funds? Because this is different than that.
No, I, I.
So, now I'm thoroughly confused. Can we pump this to another time?
We'll go with what counsel says, you don't need to fork this vote. About a two-two vote.
That would not carry a motion.
I'm sorry.
Any motion.
We should forward.
All right. Mayor CEO, do you have something you want to add before we call the?
We could bring this back at the next meeting with the budget.
All right. If, let's, uh.
I, I, if, the budget is our next meeting, which is two weeks away. I, I would like to do that myself.
That is correct.
And then give me a little bit more time to digest some of these numbers, and ask some questions of Howard and Craig on defining some of these numbers here, because I'm really concerned about giving them 855, and they just blew through it to 2 million, and now we're giving another 970, and I have very strong feelings about everything on this project, that that 970, what's, we gotta have something in place, at least to make sure if we give them that 970, they don't blow through that, and then we come back and say, well, you know, we're now at 2 million on that, and there's still 50 cubic yards to move. I, I just feel uncomfortable right now about it. I need some more discussion with Lee, Howard, and Craig on, on this particular thing. I met with Craig yesterday in his office, and we kind of went through it a little bit. But.
I would support pushing it to the next meeting also, just for the fact that it'll probably be brought back and we'll be doing all this over again any.
So we'll bring this back, but this will be a separate agenda item, and the budget item will be part of the budget?
That is correct.
Okay. And this is the money that we're talking about, these are the RIM funds that we're talking about transferring, just to be real clear.
That is correct, there's no general fund associated with this item at this time.
I think it may be cleanest for the clerk if we had a motion to continue it to the next meeting.
Please, thank you.
Move by, continuance moved by Supervisor Stoppers, our second?
Second.
All favor of continuance to our next meeting?
Aye.
All right, we're gonna take a five-minute break, and then we'll come back. All right, welcome back. We will start with, we will continue with item 18.
Item 18, action item planning, conduct a study session and provide direction to the planning department regarding continued general plan implementation.
Peter?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Peter Mauer, interim planning director. So I hope this item is a little more uplifting and positive than the last one. Wouldn't be tall.
Frustration.
Yes. I was thinking that. Marv Low. We, we.
Anyway, so, general plan implementation, we've, you know, we've done a lot, but there's still a long way to go. And, you know, with the adoption of the zoning code, what, six weeks ago now, we ticked off a number of those items, and, and because of that, we now have the ability to sort of shift our focus into some, some of the other things. We do have a lot of items that we are currently working on, things that have been directed our way from, you know, prior board action. Just, I would like to do a quick update of where we're at with those, and then move on to some of the other things that we would, we need to accomplish, or we would like to accomplish over the next year or two. So, just going in order of the things that I listed in my memo to you, we have the Oak Woodlands ordinance, that, there's a draft that's been prepared, working with the hardwood advisory committee. We are working on the environmental document for that right now. Don't have a timeline specifically, but the intent is to get that before the board, before the end of the year. The greenhouse gas reduction plan, I did just communicate with the subconsultants that did the analysis for, so your business council on the original plan, there's, but there's been a bit of miscommunication between myself and them in trying to come up to speed on where we are at and what the direction was, but I think we're finally moving forward. I expect to get a proposal next week, so we can get that reanalysis done of the planning commission's direction, and that too should be before, before you, it doesn't have to go back to the planning commission, go, you know, directly to you as soon as that analysis is completed. I don't have a timeline for that, but again, I anticipate that to be done sometime this Cultural resources management ordinance, as you recall, back in February, you adopted an urgency ordinance. That one unfortunately has been languishing a bit in my shop, just a lot of things going on, limited bandwidth, but I, and the next step on that is to actually prepare the draft ordinance that would implement the general plan policies. I am hoping that we can do that fairly quickly. I, I did develop a little committee to help, give me some guidance early on. We've, we've had several meetings, got some good recommendations, just better sitting down and crafting that ordinance now, so we can then bring it forward. I'm hoping that we can do it under the general plan, we have, drawing a blank on the term that we use under SEQA, that we rely on EIR for that, and they were simply implementing the program that we've identified in that, so we don't have to go through a separate environmental document on that. But there are a lot of moving parts with that, there's the Mills Act, there's the, you know, Department of Interior recommendations, there's, it's a lot of different things that we need to bring together to make sure that that is functional and meets the, meets the requirements of the general plan as well as the desire of the county to, you know, keep it within, you know, we could really broaden this, this ordinance out to really address all kinds of things, but I really want to try to keep it as narrowly focused as possible. Short-term vacation rental ordinance, I know that Martin has been getting a lot of comments on it, so have I. The draft was put out two weeks ago now, I think, and maybe a week ago, and we are getting a lot of comments. The comment period is really for the environmental document, the negative declaration that was prepared, but obviously, the, the issue is, is the ordinance itself. I, the end of the SEQA document, SEQA review period is September 13th. At that point in time, we will take all the comments, most likely, sit down and get our heads together and figure out, do we need to modify it? I can think of a number of, of issues where some of the suggestions we've gotten already are worthy of consideration, will be redraft, not redrafting it, but, you know, revising that ordinance, then taking it to the planning commission, and again, it should be before this board, before the end of the year. I'm looking at probably November or December for that ordinance. Copperopolis community plan, we have, my predecessor, Mr. Elliott, had worked with the community members, developed a draft plan. There was a lot of repetition that I was concerned about, a lot of duplication of policies that are already in the, in the general plan, that I felt needed to be sort of scaled back a little bit. I've worked with a, a number of members of the community, along with Supervisor Follendorf, and we're very close to wrapping that up. I hope to have that to the planning commission in second meeting of September, and then back to this board when Ms. Follendorf is back from her maternity leave, so she can be a party to the final, final adoption of that. And then the last thing that we're working on right now, it's not directly involved with planning, but we have some input in it, but there are a number of general plan implementation measures associated with it, is the Parks and Recreation Master Plan. And I'll just, you know, need to continue to work with Teresa and her shop on, you know, moving that, that thing forward, and whatever we can do to assist in that project, we will certainly do that. So that's sort of an update of where we're at with broad variety of different items that we are working on. So we now sort of move into what else do we need to do. And the first thing on my list here is the open space plan. This is an update to our conservation open space element. It is mandated by the state, and we have to get it done by January 1st, 2026, so we have just a little bit over a year to, to do that. And there are a number of things, you know, the legislation is specific but vague, if I can say that, there is, you know. if I can say that, there is, you know, these are the things we have to do, but it's not really clear what those things are because it's not very well defined in the state law. But, um, I don't want to get into a long discussion of that here today because that's something we will be working on in the future, but I think we need to set that as a priority because of the state deadline that we have on it. Special events ordinance, as we adopted the, uh, new zoning code, there's a couple of things that we sort of set aside as being, we need to really spend more time focusing on this, and I think this is one that, um, given some of the history we've had with weddings and all the different event venues that we have, we, we really need to spend some time on developing, um, some new, new standards and, and, you know, figuring out how we can accommodate special events at the same time, uh, not adversely impact neighborhoods where they, they exist, where they, um, occur. So, uh, that's something that I would recommend that we, um, do spend some time working on During the zoning ordinance update hearing process, uh, I heard some concerns from Supervisor Toffenelli about constituents that were, that had issues with, you know, private shooting ranges on their property or just shooting in general, uh, similar concerns from other members about, um, and just from the public on off-road vehicle use on private property. Um, I don't know if that's a big issue, I just, I'm bringing that up because it was something that was raised during that time, um, so privately between, um, staff and the public, uh, and we hadn't really addressed it, uh, in the, in the zoning code. Uh, if it's something that is a priority, we can certainly look at that. The mineral extraction zone is another one of those items that were sort of deferred, uh, during the zoning code update. The, the state law has changed a lot, uh, we just really need to, um, take a closer look at that, uh, and, and come up with some new requirement, new, new standards and procedures for, um, for mining operations and mineral extraction, uh, particularly our reporting process with, um, the state, um, you know, that, um, well, uh, under, under SMAR, the Surface Mining Reclamation Act. So that is something that we would like to see, uh, addressed in the future. Again, it's up to you is where we, you want to set our priorities. We've also, uh, the last time, the Williamson Act of review process was, there's a resolution that was adopted in the seventies, I believe, and, uh, the procedures have changed dramatically over time, it's sort of shifted back and forth between our office and, uh, the Department of, or the Agricultural Department. Because of the zoning requirements that go along with it, we end up taking on a fairly significant role in that, and I think it'd be worthwhile to just review the existing resolution and update it where, where it's necessary. Just so we have the procedures down, the timeframes that are established, uh, aren't realistic in the current, um, um, resolution, and, you know, we've developed a pretty good process working cooperatively with the Department of Agriculture, and it's just something that I think would be helpful for us and for the public who, uh, are interested in entering into a contract, uh, to have a, an updated resolution. So that's something that, um, we would be recommending we work on. Uh, it's been something that's been kicking around our office for a number of years and just hasn't risen, risen to the top as far as a priority, but, um, it was something that, um, we would like to get done. One of the things that I had advocate, I've, I've always advocated for and, and continue to do so is, you know, we adopted our general plan five years ago. It's not something that should sit on the shelf. Just like a business plan, it should be reviewed periodically, is it working for us? Do we need to tweak it a little bit here? And we're coming up on the five-year anniversary of adoption of that plan, and I think it would be good to do a review of that plan, not necessarily amending it. Let's see, is it working for us? Do we need to make changes? But I think we need to review it to say, hey, this is working for us. Here are changes that have occurred in the community, either through demographics or economics or whatever it may, may be, to say, hmm, you know, maybe we should go off in this direction a little differently. So, um, I think that's something that would be worthwhile bringing back to you, uh, just for consideration of, you know, and we may find, hey, it's working great, you know, move ahead. And otherwise, and, you know, we don't, I don't know the answer to that question, but that was something that I think would be important to do so that we, the plan doesn't get stale. You know, we need to keep it fresh, we need to keep it viable. Then the final thing on my list was community plans. As I mentioned, we're almost done with the Copperopolis plan. Um, I think that, you know, the area of the county that really has not, uh, had many plans is in District Three. Um, I know that, um, you know, when we were doing the general plan update, there wasn't a lot of interest in the Highway Four corridor communities, but I know that there is some interest in Arnold, and if we want to move forward with, uh, additional, uh, community plans, I think Arnold would be the best place to start. There's one thing that wasn't on my list I should probably mention is our housing element. Uh, it is due for an update in 2027. Uh, that's, um, usually by the time that it goes through all the review and adoption by, or approval by the state, uh, which has to be done, I believe, in, on July first of 2027. Um, but it's just two years away, and the housing element is a very difficult, complex process of state approval that we need to get started on right away. Uh, so between that and the, um, open space plan, um, with the deadline of, of January first, 2026, those would be my two top priorities as far as focusing staff resources on.
Sorry to interrupt you. What were your top two priorities?
The, um, the open space plan, um, the state law change, it requires us to update that, the conservation open space element by, um, January first, 26, uh, and our housing element, which would be, needed to be completed pretty much by April of 27, um, so they can go through the review process by the state, um, before July. Um, those would be, I think, important things that we need to focus on, um, as well as, you know, the completion of those projects that are, you know, currently in process, uh, and then anything else that you think are, you know, worthwhile, um, to focus our, our, our resources on. I will tell you that our, our resources are limited. Uh, we don't have, you know, a lot of people, there's not a lot of money to go out and hire a lot of consultants with, um, but I think that, um, you know, we can certainly work towards, um, many of these items, um, over the next, you know, year, year and a half, um, to get some of them done. That concludes my presentation. I do have a copy of the, uh, implementation, uh, list of all the implementation measures if you want to re, reference any of those. I don't know this necessarily, it'll include it in your packet. Um, if you have any questions about any of these items, uh, feel free to try to elaborate a little bit more on them. Uh, do you have any questions of me at this point?
I can just clarify before we get to other questions. So according to this, um, by the end of this year, we got queued up to be complete, Oakland Woodlands ordinance, greenhouse gas reduction, um, short-term vacation rental and possibly, and Parks and Rec plan, and possibly Copperopolis community plan. Is that correct?
Uh, yes.
For the year, that's a, that's a pretty big to-do list.
But it's not just to do, it's something they've been working on.
Right, to wrap up.
For quite some time, so.
Most of these are in the, the last quarter of, of, you know, process, some down the last ten yard.
I think we should talk about parties, but I'd be thrilled if we got those done.
So would I.
Yeah.
Supervisor stopper, you have any questions?
Uh, some, and also, uh, you know, thank, thank you, Peter, um, you know, with our, uh, planning director leaving and you coming back and you being here during this time is kind of crucial because your, you know, knowledge and everything, being here through the process, it's, really appreciate having you back and being part, being here with us, working on it once again.
Thank you.
You know, it's, uh, it's been, you, you know, you've helped us pass the finish line on quite a few things, and I'm glad to have you here with us again to do it.
Here, here.
Pleasure working with you. Um, that said, um, you know, I'm in agreement with all these things, you know, plus or minus and, and everything, uh, I, 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 you know, getting the, I, Jack Erman, he said it very well, you know, these things, yes, they're in the last quarter, we're passing the finish line on them, but I, I, I'm more than pleased to get those done at this time and, uh, and everything. Uh, these other things you bring, bring up, you know, the priorities that we need to put up just because of timelines and everything, I concur with you. Um, you know, it's a decision on the board and what that looks like in the end, but, you know, those definitely should be priorities because we do have deadlines on them, so I, I'm in support of moving forward on those. Um, you know, some of these other things, uh, let's see, why do I go? Short-term rentals, it's, uh, it's going to be a debate going both ways, um, but it is something that needs to be addressed and refined because the times are what they are, and that's to do with our housing, housing development also, just because a lot of the, uh, optics are, that a lot of that's going towards rentals when people feel that they should, or short-term rentals when they feel that it should be able to possibly be available to long-term rentals, per se. Um, but there's the, uh, one I, I personally feel that we need to tread carefully on is the shooting range and off-road vehicle tracks. Um, you know, it's, these are standards of a rural community that we've enjoyed throughout time and growing up here, but at the same time, you know, when the community becomes more dense and everything, you know, there has to be, uh, there has to be consideration of their neighbors, you know, it's, a lot of people, people say, like, it was like the old Jefferson, Jefferson, um, movement is like, you know, don't tread on me. Well, they think that's like, don't let, let me do what I want on my property, that, that's a double-edged blade. Not, don't tread on me means that, you know, don't let your sewage run off your property on the mine at the same time, so, you know, it's, you know, we all, we all need to be conscious of our neighbors. And at the same time, uh, you know, off-road vehicles, when we move forward on that, because we have issues, people are trespassing on certain properties, noise, and the property owners don't really care, per se, or there's been events held, uh, in certain areas where it's just not allowed, like in a HOA area, and, um, so we need to be conscious of that, but at the same time, we need to do it in a way that still allows it for, you know, the people that are doing it the correct way, and also not to tread on the people, don't tread on them, uh, when it comes to, a lot of those off-road vehicles are used for businesses or small, small personal farms, like I can, I can still drive a gator around on my small piece of property there in Rancho Calaveras, and, you know, as long as it's during the day and I, and it's like doing my yard work around there, especially in these years when I start getting a little bit older from here, I need that to move around. Um, so I, I mean, all these things are stuff that I believe should be done, uh, how we do it, like the Williamson Act, you know, um, I don't, personally, in my perspective and talking with some people at the state level, I don't think there needs to be much change. You know, I think what we have for the most part works. Um, I think that maybe it's debatable with council, you know, on what their, their perception is and my perception and talking to people at the state level's perception, you know, how far we need to go with that. I don't think we need to go very far with the changes on that, ju, but more so make sure we're staying current with the times and, and not, uh, over, because it, it could really cause a lot of complications with a lot of stuff out there, so. I, I'm, I'm in favor of everything you have here to one degree or another, um, but, you know, getting the stuff done this year, the two ones with the deadlines that we're talking about, definitely let's move forward on those, and the other stuff as it fits in, and you have, you, you have the, uh, or the planning department has the capacity to get them done, you know. I, I don't want to put pressure or, or, you know, deadlines when it's not realistic, you know. Let's get a good job done on each one of these as we move forward. Oh, and the other thing I want to bring up is to consider when we do this five-year review, because I, you know, I've always been in favor of not letting it hit the bookshelf and keep it open on the desk, is, uh, you know, there's not, as you said, there's not a lot of money in the coffers right now for, for consultants and everything. Um, one of those major things is if we decide we want to go in a different direction, we have to consider an environmental impact report to, to be able to justify those type of things. And so something for, when we get to that point for the board to consider is if we do want to make changes, as we talked in the past, some of the greenhouse admission, uh, you know, when we put that forward, uh, we've, the EIR that was done is more than adequate, but at the same time, there was considerations that weren't necessarily in it that I think this board has talked about, and if we want to make any changes to that in the future, we have to put the money there for the consultants to make those changes to EIR to make, so that we can do it legitimately. So I think that if the board wants to do any amendments or changes in the futures, we need to consider if we're willing to put the money where our mouth is.
Yeah, it, um, just to touch on that point, um, wouldn't necessarily require an EIR, but we would certainly have to do some type of environmental review for any general plan amendment that we make. It could be an EIR, you know, just, again, it depends on, on what.
The level.
The level of change is, yes.
Absolutely. I agree. That's all I have.
Martin?
Thank you, Chair.
Uh, thank you, Peter. I think the five projects that you earmarked to kick over the goal line before the end of the year would be phenomenal as Supervisor, uh, German just said. I really appreciate the help that you've given us so far regarding the short-term rentals. I do have a couple of community meetings coming up, but I'd love to see if you're available to help, um, steer people along, which would be wonderful. Um, I think maybe a good plan would be to get those over the, as I say, kick them over the goalpost and, um, and then look at the five-year at the beginning of next year and see where we are, but I agree with everybody in the fact that I think everything you've put forward is really important.
Lucius?
Yes. Yeah, um, I, I think the top six that you have here, you're working forward on is a good, I'll agree with that. Um, the cultural resources, it's kind of there, um, we have till February to get it in effect, so that means you have to be bringing it sometime in October or November to us, because there's a thirty-day once we.
Right.
Yeah, and then there's, you have to send it out to the public for their response before it even comes to us or planning commission, so that's a real tight schedule for that one.
I'm painfully aware of that.
Um, the other issue, the housing, were you here the last time we did the housing update?
Yes.
Yes, and it was mass hysteria because we, it was, we were really late on getting it done, so I appreciate you looking three years ahead on that item because it was real hysterical.
We were fortunate enough that we have around an eight-year timeline, not a five-year timeline, otherwise we'd be late now.
Yeah, so, um, thank you for doing that. And then, you know, the open space, obviously, um, we have to do that, and so, and that's by 2026. So, um, I'm fine with everything you have here. Um, man is not here for the copper community plan, but I know they're working on it, he tells me about it every so often, so I know they're getting very close on having that adopted.
Yes.
So, I'm fine with the, the six items that you have, and the housing and the open space.
Yeah, I would just agree on, everybody says, certainly open space, we need to comply with the state law by the deadline, and, and I'm sure we will do that. I would caution when you get to the, uh, section B list, what's our heads on, some of these are going to be really sticky.
Oh, yeah.
Special events, uh, Williamson Act, shooting off-road tracks, um, I will probably not be here for that discussion with you gentlemen, but, uh, I would, and the words of Mark Twain, uh, a man who holds a cat by the tail learns a lesson they can learn in no other way. So, picking up the cat is going to have something to it. Peter, are there other things that we could help you with?
Um, I guess the only other thing I would ask at this point in time, but, so, you know, we obviously have, you know, sort of our, our marching orders of the two with the, you know, state deadlines as well as the, you know, things that we're currently working on. Should we have some spare time? Are there any of, of the, the other items down there? I, I heard that the five-year review is probably sort of up there on the, you know, list, but maybe wouldn't come until the beginning of next year, just given the realities and what we have on our plate already. we have on our plate already.
I'd love to talk to you about the possibility of doing the Community Plan at Arnold.
Okay. Is there any of those other items in, for just Part B, that are just like, don't bother? Or, yeah, I'd really like to see that, that get done. From our perspective, for the kinds of things that we have going on in our department, we probably will need to grab that cat tail soon, as far as the Special Events Ordinance.
Yes, I was going to say that.
The other, the other things are, you know, Arnold Community Plan, you know, I think that's, that would be a good one. I don't think that the shooting range or off-road vehicle tracks are a high priority item, it just hasn't really seemed to, you know, so it came up as an issue, and now it sort of calmed down, so I think we can sort of set that aside, unless we just suddenly have nothing better to work on. And the, the other ones would be, you know, the mineral extraction zone update, and a minor procedural update to the resolution for Williamson Act. And I agree with you, Supervisor Stoppa, we don't need to reinvent the wheel, it's just sort of tweaking it a little bit, so that it's consistent with what we have to go through in order to get those to the board and get them in.
If I could add one thing to Williamson, I'm working on this on a statewide level with RCRC, and there are a lot of moving parts. I would hate to go through a whole bunch of work and to find out that everything changed at the state level, so, you keep that in mind as you, as you manage your time.
All right. Well, unless there are any further direction, comments from the public on any of these things?
This is not action, this is an informational item, is there any?
Sorry, it is an action item.
It is an action.
Let's give you the direction. There's no formal, you know, ordinance or resolution taken it, but it was.
We will take public comment regardless, so a public comment on this item.
We do have online public.
We have public comment online. Very well, have, we have our own line, rules apply. Online, as they do in the room, you'll have three minutes. If you're addressing something that's not on the agenda, I will cut you off and ask you to speak to that specific individual item when it comes up. Madam Clerk?
Helen Fasino, Calaveras Planning Coalition, can you hear me?
Yes, Tom, you have three minutes.
Thank you for taking a careful look at general plan implementation today. We at the CPC agree that those soon-to-be-completed items listed in the staff report under current planning department assignments, including the Copperopolis Community Plan, are in fact soon to be completed. We at the, and we're also thrilled with that. We at the CPC also agree that the Open Space-related other projects, the Open Space Plan update, Special Events, Shooting, OHV Use, Mineral Extraction Zone, Williamson Act Procedures, should also be a priority coming up. With the zoning map and the zoning code updates, we've done a lot to address residential, commercial, and industrial development. Now it is time to address mining, agriculture, and open space uses in more detail. We at the CPC agree that the Highway Four Corridor community plans, like the Arnold Plan, are the next one in lines after the Copperopolis Community Plan is adopted. Please consider adopting design guidelines in addition to the community plans for these communities. The zoning ordinance update you recently approved eliminated the use of the PD Zone for Design Review. The intent was to replace the PD Zone Design Review with community design guidelines. The time for that replacement on the Highway Four Corridor is now. Thank you for considering our input today.
Thank you. Is there a public comment online?
We have no further public comment online.
Very well, we don't have a specific action, but I think we've given direction. Is everybody good with that?
I can't really call vote on.
I could be, could make a motion for Peter to proceed as we discussed, within your capacity.
I'll second that.
With a big thank you again, Peter, for helping us across the, thank you.
Happy to be here.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Carrie's, Carrie?
Aye.
For, oh, one, one absent. Peter, thank you very much.
You're welcome, thank you.
And, and really, you could get these across the goal line by the end of the year, they'll be a nice bottle of Murphy's wine for you.
Thanks, Peter.
All right, move on to supervisor announcements.
In compliance with Government Code 53232.3D, board members shall provide brief reports on any meetings attended at the expense of the local agency, and may make other announcements or report out.
All right.
Just to report that I had had a conflict in meetings, because that was a Central Sierra Economic Development District meeting, along with a workforce joint, and then also Molo Job Training Agency meeting on the same day up in Sonora, conveniently, but Martin went ahead and attended for me the Hardwood Advisory Committee meeting, and then reported out to me, so I'll let him report to you on that. And then, albeit, this Thursday, I'll be at the CSAC Legislative Meeting, and other than that, thankfully, I have not cost the county any more money.
I was appreciative.
Carrie? I attended the Mountain County EMS Agency meeting on Friday. We will soon be getting an invoice for our portion of it, I will forward it to you, Teresa, so we can stay in that JPA. It's a very good JPA, it's well-run, and it provides all the ambulance service and air service for emergencies and first responders in the county.
Supervisor Avery?
Thank you, Chair. As Supervisor Stoppa said, I, I did attend the Hardwoods Advisory Committee, and the ordinance, ordinance looks like it's in great shape, going towards the planning commission, so that's all, going along as planned. And also, I don't know if I have to report it, but I did attend as an alternate for Supervisor Follendorf yesterday's strategic planning meeting.
I have nothing I'm required to report, I'm CEO. Counsel, clerk of the board?
No.
Very well, we stand adjourned.